Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 17th zoning board hearing. A couple of housekeeping items we'll start off with. I need a motion for the approval over the minutes of the last meeting.
Motion.
Which is July 13th. I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
A motion by Mary, second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Get my pen to work. All right, Kelly, that's, let me pass that down to Kelly for me, please. The next zoning board hearing is currently scheduled for September 14th, which indicates that the planning board is now back on their regular two monthly meetings of the, looks like the first, second, and fourth Tuesday of the month. So we follow that schedule on that back end. With that, we have a continuation. Tonight, we have one hearing, which is a continuation. And that's on the application of Judith Gonzalez of 15 Lincoln Street for the variance relief in relation to a possible land located on the south-west side of, in section of Lincoln Street and Walnut Street. Noninumbred is 15 Lincoln, the variance release sought in order to permit the erection and the maintenance of a gazebo-like structure on the premises notwithstanding the dimensional requirements of sections 2.4, 2.5 in the zoning bylaw. To get everybody up to snuff, this thing was heard back on, in July with...
It was heard in June.
I'm sorry, in June. And then we additionally, we asked the applicant to go back and get some engineering to better assess the situation. We've had, we had the last meeting, of course. We continue it because no one showed up. And is the applicant in the room tonight? Are you here? Okay. Why don't you come on up to the front, please? Let me kind of review, paraphrase some of these things. The, this was dated May 16th from Town Planner Larry Duncan. There's been no site plan provided on this application where existing proposed structures are located. The current gazebo is already constructed. In addition to that, the building department has advised the planning board and also this board that there's a violation of building code concerning this. There was no permits pulled for the structure when it was constructed. And therefore, a cease and desist has been put on the property. And with that, I will, by the way, we do have a set of plans that were brought in after the structure was built. I guess this was designed afterwards. This is dated, no date on this, but I think you received it at the last public hearing.
I did have something.
And you have some, something additional for the board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, is that the same one?
Yeah. Do you need a copy, Fran? This was, this, that was just, that's not... Okay, why don't you have a seat in front of the microphone? So, you got bearings on what you provided us? Okay, this is, looks like this, this is a... This is a plot plan that was done by land planning?
From the engineer.
Yep.
The engineer. Is there a big print of this or just this?
They just gave me that.
Well, he has the big print. He's just on copies.
I'm sure, I don't know.
Okay. So... So it shows that, the engineering shows us, board members, if you look at the Winter Street in front of you, there was 80 feet of frontage on this property. And that's where the structure is mostly located, on the Winter Street side. If you take a look at the Lincoln Street side, you'll notice that there's a big yard back there. And that's probably where the structure should have went.
But it's not. That's the way I want it, right there.
Is that your property?
Yes.
Okay, I'm confused. Where is, where is this proposed?
This is the church, St. Mary's Church.
Yeah, so there's Winter Street.
Right. There's the structure.
Okay, that's the structure. It's 30, 30 and a half feet?
It's a...
Then why does it say "proposed gazebo" when it's, there's already a structure there?
The shade is a proposed. The existing is in the dotted line.
Existing is in the dotted line.
This is where it is right now.
Okay. So basically, oh, so, this is, I want to be clear. Do you, do you have a copy in front of you?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So, this plan is indicating that you're looking to relocate this?
No. Far as I know, he said, I have to move it 10 feet, right? That's what the engineer told me.
So bringing it down 16 by 20?
Okay, so what you're, what you're trying to give us...
If I have to move it.
Is that you're, you're willing to reduce it 10 feet?
Right.
Is that correct?
If I have to do it, yes.
Well, something's got to get done.
So we would bring it down to 16 by 20?
Yes.
It's saying proposed 20 by 20.
Yeah, that's what it's saying.
Good, even better.
Okay. Well, he wrote it down, it's different.
Yep. No, but Louis said he can move it 6 by 20.
It's saying 20 by 20 existing, correct? Which it is now.
Right.
And it's, the plot plan is showing that you're proposing to actually slide it back...
Yeah.
Yep.
Closer to the existing two family, still keeping the 20 by 20 size.
Right.
Okay. Are you attaching this, is this attached to the house now?
No.
Looks like it is.
Well, you guys don't go and see it.
I've been to say it, to be honest with you. It's not a gazebo, it's a carport.
Taking a picture? Or really, they have pictures, because they took pictures of my house.
I've gone by it at least a dozen times.
I didn't know that they can do that, too.
The last thing I'd call it is a gazebo, it's a carport.
So basically, what this plan is referring to...
Boy, that's not for cars.
Is they're looking at 10.5 feet off the side property line. And it's, looks like, based on what I'm seeing, right now, it's like 3 feet from the property line, from the neighbor's property line.
3.5?
Well, somebody told me it was 5. Now it's 3.
Well, it's showing...
4 feet, 4.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that sounds better.
Where am I, I don't see 4 feet.
I see 3 feet, 5 inches.
I don't see, I see 3.5.
3 and 1/2 feet.
I see 3.5 feet.
I don't believe they measured them.
Want to go by what the engineers...
The engineer went there, that's right.
The engineer says it's 3.5 feet now.
I would go by this because he measured correctly.
You want to move it back 10.5.
All right, so let's all be clear here, okay? The dotted line on the plan is what's on the property right now. The solid plan is what I think you're referring back to us as what you're willing to move it to.
Correct.
Am I correct?
You are correct.
But I just want you guys to know that if I have to move it, I'm going to close it. It's going to be closed in that side.
We want to close that side on the other side.
It's going to be closed, so they don't, they don't want to see what's going on in there.
I mean, is it okay to close that side?
I will close it, even if it's a sheet there. I'll put something there.
Can I ask you a question?
It's going to be a lot of work.
Basically for private...
It's going to be a lot of work.
Why, why didn't you put it where you had all the land?
Because that would be...
Because that's the way I want to put it.
That would be way far from the house. That would be on the grass, on the lawn.
Right, but where you put it is in violation.
I understand that, that's why I said I will move it.
But she didn't know at that time.
I didn't know that. I already explained million times.
If she had known ahead of time, she would have...
This is...
Instead of knocking on my door afterwards then, they can knock on my door when I was doing it.
I mean, the thing that I don't...
I know I didn't have a permit, I know I'm wrong. They should tell me.
The thing that I don't understand is, she had a great relationship with the neighbor. I think the right thing to do would have been for the neighbor to go over and talk to her.
Yeah, not after I was done.
Because they had a great relationship. To go behind her back and hire her, come over here and...
And tell me they want to do it the right way.
Do it that way, I thought it was wrong.
First of all, first of all, we don't need to get into...
No, I understand, but I'm just saying, they have a great relationship.
The applicant was wrong.
It would have been the right way.
The applicant was wrong.
You don't have to keep telling me that, I know that.
And what they did.
See, that's why I don't want to talk.
We, we gave you the opportunity to get this thing engineered properly, so we know it was on the ground.
I paid $1,500 for this papers here. $1,500. Okay? That's how much I paid. I know, I know, I understand. I'm just saying...
I'm surprised it wasn't 2 grand.
Well, that's because we're a friend of mine, maybe.
That's because they know him, okay.
We're a friend of mine, otherwise it would be more.
All right, let's, all right, let's do this. I'm going to, I'm going to start with John, ask, ask questions, and then I'll open it up to the public. John, do you have any comments, questions concerning this application?
Not right now.
You cannot talk? I can talk.
I know.
Okay. I pay my taxes, I already said the other time.
I know.
Okay.
She had no idea in the beginning, she needed a permit and...
We're, we're going through the board.
You cannot talk.
Okay, my only concern would be that they're throwing out some different numbers on what they'd have the size, and on here, it's, it has a proposed 20 by 20.
Right.
So that would be my only concern, is that now you're talking about a different size, and I don't know where, how it's going to play into what's on here. So I can only go by what's on this plan.
Bob? I don't even know if it triggers a new application, I've got to think about it. Question? Hello?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've got a question for you. What I'm looking at, you have to say when I have, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so this, right here, is only her property. This whole thing is just her property?
Yes.
Okay. So currently, if I'm reading this right, it's 3.3 feet 5 inches from the lot line.
Right.
You want to move it back to 10 feet 5 inches. It's currently 133 feet from the right and 48 feet from the left, correct?
Correct.
It's a 20 by 20 proposal, which is currently a 20 by 20 foot. You're just saying you want to reduce the size of this?
So it's currently a 20 by 20?
According to your engineer, it's a 20 by 20 current.
Okay.
And the proposal is to still keep it at 20 by 20, but move it another 7 feet, or 6.5 feet, to be exact.
So on here, you wrote, to bring it down, so maybe this is where you wrote it on here?
That was my boyfriend said that.
Oh.
You will put it, you will do a 16 by 20.
Just stick with the engineer right now for the moment.
Okay.
So the proposal with the engineer is to keep it at a 20 by 20. You're just, the only change you want to make here is to move it back 6 more feet.
No, they're moving it, they're moving it closer to the house. They're abutting it to the house.
Yeah, but moving it from the property line. Moving the property line.
Still part of the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So would that be far enough from their house?
Well, you, let me just, so we all understand it. You're moving it 6 and 1/2 more feet from where it currently is.
Right.
Keeping the same size. You're just basically picking it up and moving it from here to that pole.
Correct.
As long as we're on the same page as to what you want to do. And you're going to keep it the same size.
Yes. As long as it's far enough from the other house...
Frankly, I don't, I'm making a comment, but I'll turn it over to Bob, then I don't want to turn it over to the public unless John has any comments. I still think 20 by 20 is too big.
It's supposed to be 16 by 20.
Right, so...
Well, let me, let me get through the board, and let me get through some comments, and then you'll have an opportunity, we'll finish it up that way. As long as we're on clear as to what you want to do. Bob?
Okay. I see what the engineer is saying about moving it back and adhering to all the setbacks of, if they slide it back, first of all, I'm getting confused, are relocated in these plans? Are these plans...
That's the plan that actually the structure is.
It is.
But the structure's not finished.
Structure looks nothing like that.
Do we know, was a permit pulled for this?
No.
That's why they hit...
No. Right. Because she didn't know in the beginning.
So are you going to adhere to these plans or finish it according to these plans?
Not if we, depends on what this board votes.
Correct. If, if the board votes in favor.
Right.
Right now, it looks like a carport. That's what it looks like.
I've been by it, correct.
Okay.
Yeah. But these are the plans that you want to...
Right, finish.
Complete. Okay. And we all, we all realize that you're going to slide it back. Okay. Okay.
All right, John, anything?
Yeah. If I remember correctly, when you were here the first time, I believe you showed some pictures of the structure, or the, or the neighbor showed pictures.
The neighbor showed pictures of my house.
The neighbor showed pictures of the structure. That was already completed, for the most part.
The roof wasn't on it.
The roof wasn't on it.
I stopped, I didn't, did nothing yet.
So, when you say you're going to move it, do you mean you're going to completely take it down and rebuild it again?
I mean, it's a lot of work, yeah.
That's, that's what you're saying now.
That's why they want to do it, that's why I have to do it.
You can't just say, "Move it."
Oh, no.
You've got to rebuild.
It's a lot of work. Yes. It is a lot of work.
So if you guys leave, it's too big and it's not approved, we can bring it down beyond...
Here's the roof down.
Bring it down to 16 by 20.
Yeah. The roof wasn't on it.
It's bigger than the house.
It's not on.
Yeah, the roof wasn't on, when we saw the pictures, if I recall.
So it's, basically, they have a little patio here, and they just, they have a grill, and they wanted to cover it.
Yeah, if I remember the pictures.
That's all it is.
Would you like to stand up? Come on up, please. Can you grab the microphone, please, if you would?
Can we?
You know, state your name.
Do you guys want us to stay here?
By the way, do they have the...
No, you can stay there.
Did they fill it out?
Um, yes.
Just grab a microphone, if you would.
State, have them state their names, who the other people, have the other people state who they are.
Fran, can you state who's with you today?
Yes. First of all, I represent Mr. Joe Rosaci. And these are his children. He's just, Maria.
Sure. Mike Rosaci, live at Woodridge Road, Milford resident. And my dad could not be here this evening, so...
Understand.
I checked that out with the board ahead of time, and Maria.
And I'm Maria Castiglione, I live on Woodridge Road as well.
Thank you.
First of all, it was very important for Mr. Rosaci for me to express his feeling that, he's just a very honest man. He believes everyone plays by the book, and no one does anything outside of what the rules were. So he assumed when the construction began that it had already been approved, because he knew people had to build, get permits to build things. And therefore, he didn't feel he had any right to object to it until later on, when he saw the size of the structure, and he was informed that they did have a right to object to it. This structure, this is Mr. Rosaci's patio, he can almost reach over and touch that. It's like 4.4 feet, 3.5 feet or so from the boundary line. The structure that's built here is almost the size of Mr. Rosaci's house. That neighborhood's very dense. The houses are close together. He's concerned about resale value. He's a senior citizen, he's getting up there in age. If he and his wife want to downsize, what is this doing to the value of the house? First of all, it isn't finished, we know. And if it were to be finished, it would have to be according to the plans. But I would, I would suggest to the board that if they're going to have to take this down, whatever they build should be built with a building permit. I mean, you can't, can't just, if you see it, the pilings and everything, you just can't pick it up and move it.
Right.
It's probably going to have to be disassembled to do that. And that should go before the building commission, building inspector, and get an approval of what can fit on that lawn, lot without encroaching, I know it doesn't cross over the land, but it's, it's very intrusive to Mr. and Mrs. Rosaci if they want to have a meal out on their back porch.
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is she coming back?
Yeah, but I have a question.
Sure.
So getting a permit is going to help the value of the house and selling the house a lot more?
Let me, let me kind of explain what, what's going on here. First of all, you don't just go and build something without a permit.
I understand, no.
You have to provide a plan.
I understand.
You have to make sure that the structure fits within the side lots of the requirement.
Right.
And in the neighborhood.
I get that.
So you don't, and, but when something gets built way bigger than what the house is next door, or the neigh...
No, it's not bigger than the house.
Or, this structure is massive.
Yeah.
And it was built illegally, and it was built without permits. We, as a board, and that's why, and we couldn't even make a decision to take it down, because we didn't even know where it was on the property.
No, I get that part. I understand that my sister, what she did was wrong. She didn't know that she needed a permit ahead of time. What I don't understand is, if you build it without a permit, then she's going to have an issue selling this house. But now if you get a permit and it gets approved, then he's okay with selling the house. I don't get that part.
No, the size of the structure is a...
But again, if it gets approved, he's okay with it.
All I'm indicating to you is, right now, what I'm looking at, I am not voting a favor.
No, I understand, but even if you bring it down, will you bring it down to 16 by 20?
What is, what my suggestion, what my suggestion's going to have to be here, my suggestion, and, and the board members can certainly decide what they want to do, preferably, this structure has to come down.
Totally down.
Well, you can't move it, because it's in concrete.
You can, you can take it down and rebuild it.
But you need to provide the building department with the plans of the size that you're going to build.
Yes.
I'm not voting, I am not voting for a 20-foot by 20-foot structure.
No, we don't want that. We want 16 by 20.
Well, I don't know if, I don't even know if I'm, I'm okay with 16 by 20.
Even if you get a permit?
You, you need to, first of all, first of all, you need to modify these plans. You have to get a permit, and now that you know that it's engineered to a point of what you can fit, you still have to stay within the side lot requirements. So if the side lot requirement in that neighborhood is 15 feet, then you cannot start your structure until it's 15 feet from the abutting property. Right now, it's 3.5 feet from the abutting property. So you're in violation of the building, zoning board now, from the zoning bylaws now, because it's not properly where it's supposed to be. And that's why we needed to see the site plan and the engineering. Certain frontage and side lot requirements by, by bylaw in this community is the law. So if she's got a 15-foot side setback in this neighborhood, then she's got to conform to that 15-foot side setback, which means whatever abutter is, is on or near this property, whether it's, whether it's these people's families or another family, that structure can't be 15 feet from the side property line. That's the, that's the rule. Those are the bylaws. You just can't go and put it up where you think you want it.
Right.
You have to be within conformance of the, of the bylaw. So with that, the building inspector needs to guide you that this is within the conformance of the bylaw, and that you will, and if you conform within the bylaw, you may not even need to come to this board for a special permit. If you fit it within the bylaw. So, that's where this all really needs to start. Having this plan now helps you immensely of what can, what you can fit. So now the building inspector can say, "Okay." You may say, "I want to build a 20 by 20." The building inspector's going to say, "Oh, no, you can't. You need to have so many feet from the side, and so many feet from the front, and this is what you can fit." But this here, this ground engineering plan lays the dimensions so that you know what you can fit. I can't say right now that this 20-foot by 20-foot garage is going to fit there without going through the zoning bylaws to determine the requirements of minimum frontage and side setbacks. So that's just, that's part of what the building department does. Do you understand? So if you were going to build your house on a lot, you can't just build it anywhere on the lot. You have to be so many feet from each side, the front and the back. This here applies the same way. She can have a 30-foot gazebo to go all the way down to the backyard, if she can fit it within the side front and rear lots, and she may not need a variance. You can do an addition on the house all the way back here, as long as you fit within the guidelines of the bylaws of front, side, and rear. So this is why we asked for this engineering, because we had no idea where that was in relation to the property. Right now, it's in violation of the bylaw, and it does have to come down and be moved. So now the next question is, that the building department's got to guide you on what really you can fit there legally. You may be able to fit this, or you may be able to fit something smaller. But only he can guide you to make sure of what you can fit, since now you have a full engineered plan. I cannot, I can't sit here, and I'm sure this boardman, these board members cannot sit here, and say, "Okay, well, we'll go ahead and allow a 16 by 20," because I still don't know if they're going to be on the, the right side lot requirements of the zone. Let's see what the engineer put here. All right, the side yard lot right here, he says is 10 feet. What's required is a minimum of 10 feet, the rear is 15, and what is currently existing. So what I would, what I would recommend, so that you're happy and she's happy, is that this structure gets relocated with a new building permit that you may not need to come to this board for, for a variance.
So get a permit to move it?
You, well, you won't need a, right now, you're going to need to move it anyways.
Right.
No matter what, it's going to have to get moved. I prefer you be happy going through the building department to make sure you can fit what size you want to fit, without even coming in front of this board. Because you, what you may want to do is, you may want to make it 10 feet wide and 20 feet long, or 25 feet long. So you, now that you have an engineering plan, now the building inspector can guide you, saying, "Okay, this is what you can fit, without coming into this board for a special permit." And then your aggravation kind of stops.
As far as I know, they said, "There was so many neighbors complaining. Where are they?" I don't see anybody there.
There is no other neighbors.
Where's the neighbors?
We, we gave you, we gave you the benefit, we, first of all, you didn't do what you were supposed to do, ma'am.
What, what did I say?
And now you have, so now we can guide you...
Did you have to say it again?